Meeting come to order. First order of business is the agenda approval.
Mr. President, you have an Agenda Item 12. It's a new Agenda item. This is a matter that came up after the 72-hour notice period for posting of the prior Agenda. It's a conveyance of real property to the district or to the agency, and it's something that needs to be taken care of today. You also have a set of minutes for the February 25 special meeting of the Board, and these items can be considered only if we have a two-thirds vote of the Board to accept them for action on this Agenda.
And I would move to accept the additional items on the Agenda and to approve the Agenda as amended.
I'll second that. Been moved and seconded that the Agenda be approved as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Report on closed session.
The Board did meet in closed session with its real property negotiator and to confer with legal counsel under Agenda Item 1 on the closed-session Agenda, which is the conference with real property negotiator. No action was taken with regard to the LaCombe property. With regard to the Avia and Luthra Family Trust properties, the Board did authorize the real property negotiator to make an increased offer. Under Agenda Item 2, Conference with Legal Counsel regarding anticipated litigation, no action was taken in closed session. This will, there will be action taken in open session under what is now Agenda Item 13. And then, under closed session, Item 3, Conference with Legal Counsel, no action was taken on any of the three matters listed. Oop, I'm sorry. With regard to South River LLC, the Board did authorize a modified offer to the owner of that property. No action was taken with regard to the McDonald or Yokoyama properties.
The third item is public comments on matters not on the Agenda. Let's see what we got here. We have both. Both these are item number two. We have two requests. Lee, I can't pronounce your last name, sorry.
Lee Bartholomew. Oh, never my area.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lee Bartholomew is my name. I'm a real property appraiser. I came in support of evaluation that I developed for property owners, Avila, and around the second item, but it seems as though in closed session earlier, you have made a recommendation to reanalyze the offer that was originally made to them. As a result, I don't suspect you need my testimony, it seems. I don't know what that offer was, obviously, and I'm not here to represent them. I'm here to help understand issues associated with the property if it turns out that you need that. So guidance, let me know if I should quietly leave the room or whether I should hang around just for the interest of the entertainment.
I think our staff will be in, be back in contact with their, our people will speak with their people type of thing.
Perfect. Okay. Thanks so much, you guys.
Mr. and Mrs. Avila?
Yes.
Same thing. Right.
Must be the same arm. Yeah.
Morning.
Morning.
Jeff Avila?
Nicole Avila.
Did you have a question for us?
Your card was down here to speak, so was that the same scenario?
Yeah, same scenario.
Same thing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, number four is already taken care of.
Well, no, you still need to consider and approve or modify those two sets of minutes.
Approval of the March 10, 2016 minutes and add the February 25, 16 minutes also.
I would move for approval of both minutes as presented.
Second. Been moved and seconded that approval of the minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Review of monthly and year-to-date revenue expenses.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the Board. This report is for February 2016. The agency started the month with a cash position of approximately $6.3 million. The agency received sizable amounts of revenue for the month of February totaling approximately $10.4 million. We received the first assessment payment for $2.2 million, a true-up payment from the state for $8.2 million, and a land lease payment for agricultural activities on the Barrow One site. On the expense side, most of the activity was in the Southport project for land acquisition. There was, there were expenses on the Rivers project for the erosion control repair and also in the administration side for contributions to the tree mitigation fund. Total expenditures for the month were approximately $1.8 million. The ending position for the month was $15.2 million. The 14.8 number on the bottom of the column for February is an error on my part. I was monkeying around with the spreadsheet and forgot to change it back. So the total at the end of the month was 15.2. As I mentioned last month, this project's been moved, the Southport project's been moving so quickly in land acquisition that generally we keep our reports two months behind to allow Finance Department to post all the entries and give, provide accurate information to the Board. But because we're spending so much, I just want to point out the fact that in the progress report, you can see our true cash position right now is approximately $6 million. We have an item in this meeting that'll be coming up later. With mechanisms, we're going to request the Board to allow, go forward, that will help us manage cash flow as the project goes forward. We also have another true-up payment in the works with the state, and we hope to see that in a month or two, and also another flood assessment installment in May. And that ends the report for this month.
So that second installment will be similar to 2 million or?
Yeah, approximately, yes.
Thank you very much. One question I do have, since we're adding number 12, we'd need a special vote or a separate vote on that because of a two-thirds requirement?
You needed the two-thirds vote to get it on the Agenda, and you can, you take it up in the order in which it appears on the Agenda.
So when we approve the Agenda?
It's within the consent Agenda.
So if we approve the consent Agenda?
I'd move consent.
And I would, I would second that. Items 6 through, through 12.
All those in favor of the consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing on item number 13.
Good morning, President Denton, members of the Board. Today, I'm going to present another resolution of necessity for your consideration for the Sacramento River-Southport early implementation project. As I had before, I'll discuss the, how we've got to where we are today, and then I will present information required for the, making the findings of a, for a resolution of necessity for the project. This is probably going to be one of the last. Can't say it's the very last. I know, Mr. Denton, you asked me this just this past week. We have some orf, we have at least one orphan parcel that we may need to go through the condemnation procedure on, so I just, just to let you know. So maybe one more next month. So first and foremost, as I've said before, the Southport EIP is a public safety project. Our overall, our overarching goal is to provide 200-year protection to the city, its residents, and businesses, and doing so by causing the least amount of harm to private property. So we have designed, and now we are anticipating going into construction later this year to achieve 200-year flood protection and maximize the use of local resources on this particular reach. As you know, we had a problem identification report. It was completed a number of years ago now. Alternative analysis, both of those are being updated presently. Southport was selected, though, after those, after looking at those evaluations in 2010 to address significant levy deficiencies along the river. And in 2011, a preliminary design report was completed, which analyzed those deficiencies and possible solutions. Since that final preliminary design report, levy design has advanced from 15% all the way to 100% complete. As you know, Village Parkway design is 100% complete, and construction of the roadway is well underway and nearly complete. And the project team anticipates that levy design will, will not only be completed, but we're going out to bid in the next couple of months so that construction could start during this summer's construction season. Just prior, excuse me. So a design decision hierarchy was placed before you to help deliberate on solutions that address known deficiencies in the project. We presented three combined measure alternatives. One included an adjacent levy. The other one was a setback levy with berms, and the third was a fix-and-place with seepage berms. The team presented two guiding principles to selecting a preferred design alternative. One was to develop a project that provides the greatest amount of protection to the city as possible and minimizes the effect on the community while achieving their first objective. The combined measures of adjacent levy with seepage berm, setback levy with seepage berm, and fix-and-place seepage berm designs were assembled to produce two final design alternatives. At the January 2013 meeting, the project team presented these two design alternatives, which included various solutions. The first alternative included fix-and-place repairs with conventional cutoff walls, and the second alternative, oh, excuse me, in segments A and B through the southern part of the project, combined with a setback levy beginning in segment B through and behind B's late with an adjacent levy and seepage berm through segment F. Alternative 2 consisted of the same solutions for A, C, D, E, and G, but B and F were set aside for specific value engineering. Those value engineering studies were completed in May and August of 2012, and based on those, the feasibility of those measures, the Board approved and directed the project team to integrate the preferred design alternative into the project design for segments B and So today, we are asking you to make, make the necessary findings to approve a resolution for necessity. We have to show that the public interest and necessity for the project, the project is planned and located in a manner that is most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury, that the project is necessary, the property is necessary for the project, and an offer is made to the owner of record. We've covered this many times before. The Sacramento, the project is five, 5.6 miles, designed to provide 200-year flood protection, protects all of the citizens, and $4 billion in community assets. And without this project, residents and businesses will continue to be at risk. The project is located in, in a manner with a greatest public good and least private injury. So it stretches from the SAC Bank project that was completed by the Army Corps of Engineers all the way to the city's southern boundary. We've designed, the project team designed, evaluated a number of design solutions to achieve 200-year flood protection, and you, the Board, approved that project as well as the EIR subsequently to that, to provide the greatest amount of public safety, or the design selection was based on public safety considerations, engineering requirements and constraints, project borrow needs, habitat mitigation, and impacts to private property. Property in question that we're talking about today is, is the Kubo Family Trust property. It's approximately 35 acres in size and located in segment C. Twelve, almost 13 acres, 12.97 acres of the property is needed for levy improvements, including the levy, the O and M corridor, and the setback area. .04 acres is needed for a temporary construction easement, which will provide, will place access to the property, which will be lost with the, with the abandonment of South River An offer was approved by you, the Board, in September 2005. A written offer package was presented to the Kubo Family Trust representative just following that board meeting. A complete offer package was sent to them on September 23, 2005. 15, I'm sorry. That concludes my presentation for this resolution of necessity. Please open the public hearing and entertain any public comments, and then your vote is appreciated.
Thank you. We're open for public hearing on Resolution 16-04-01, as explained by the, by Paul. Any comments? There being none, public comments, hearing is closed. We need a motion on item number 13.
I'll make a, a motion for approval of Resolution 16-04-01, authorizing the acquisition of real property parcel number 04626006-000.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Regular Agenda. Consideration of approval of key project funding actions and to including, one, acceptance of funds from the City of West Sacramento, and, two, approval of terms associated with establishment of a bank line of credit.
Yeah, we're here today to, to ask you to, to take three actions that I'll go over in a second. I just want to say, since you, you have the Agenda report before you, you know that we're, we're really looking at the cash flow and gearing up for the construction of the Southport project. So we've got some key actions today, but as we, we move forward, once that project is under construction, we'll probably be coming back to you again as we know more about the cash flow, revenues, and expenditures once that project's underway. But I think the actions today are really looking at making sure that there's enough working capital on hand and that we have mechanisms to deal with the, the variation that we expect with the state reimbursement and, and advancement process. So the tools that we have will be in place to allow you to, to award a construction contract and, and get that project going. So the, the three actions that we're, we're asking you to look at are, number one, accepting Measure V funds from the City of West Sacramento. So as you know, last year, the City Council authorized the issuance of a, of a bond against the, the Measure V sales tax revenues, and there would be a dedication of $10 million towards this project. That bonding has been delayed, and so what, what's happened is part of the funds were to go to the streetcar project, and that schedule is put off, and, and we've tried to, to hold off on the bonding because of that. So what, what we've looked at is what we have, we do have what we call fund balance, so we have money that's come in, regular allocations of sales tax that are available. And so at this time, we're recommending $4.5 million be allocated to, to West Africa for, for the project. And we know that we, we would be coming back to you likely early next year to ask you to, to receive another 5.5 million. And it may be that, you know, we, we bond in early 2017. If, if not, you know, it may be another allocation of what we call pay-as-you-go. So other, other fund balances that we accrue because those sales tax dollars come in. The second action that we're asking you to, to approve is because of the, the nature of the state advancements and reimbursements, there, there are sometimes cash flow issues that are month-to-month deficits that will likely occur as you're waiting for the, the state to, to reimburse you for, for activities you've already expended funds on. So what, what's typically done in a, a large project like this is that you get a, a line of credit in place, a bank line of credit, so that, you know, when, when you need the cash month-to-month, you'll have those, those funds available. So we're, we're asking you to approve some preliminary deal terms with First Northern Bank. That's a, a local bank who has, you know, expressed an interest in providing that line of credit. We would still come back to you once we have the actual loan documents, as it were, for that line of credit, and you, you would approve it then. But the preliminary terms are pretty basic, you know. There would be a, an initial three-year term to the line of credit. There's a Wall Street Journal prime rate index. It would be a variable rate, but it would be tied to an index, so a percentage of whatever that rate is. And, and then there's also a requirement that there would be an escrow account, and that the state funds would actually be held by First Northern Bank, and we'd be making expenditures out of that account from funds that come in from the state. So that's action two. The, the third action is really to get your municipal advisor assigned. So Del Rio Advisors has been your municipal advisor for the last two flood assessment bond issues, and so we would ask that you just authorize another engagement letter with Del Rio Advisors, and they would represent you as we go forward with the line of credit, and potentially another West Africa bonding, again, not in the near term, but sometime in the future. But we would, we would monitor basically your capacity to issue additional debt if it's needed, and we, you know, we prepare for that eventuality. It doesn't mean that, you know, we're going to be bonding tomorrow, but the idea would be that we would have the finance team ready if, if it's needed. So that, that, that kind of summarizes the, the report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Really don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. This is really very important, and I'm glad to see the city and staff and everybody stepping up to do what they have to do. One of the main reasons is, is that we are just now getting ready to finalize the GRR. We've got a chief's report that is coming out very, very soon, and we've got this Word of Bill that is pending in Congress, and, and things are moving in the proper direction. And for me, it is very important that we don't have any bumps in the road from a financing perspective so that the feds get nervous, or the state gets nervous, or somebody gets nervous, and, and things don't materialize as, as we envision that it is going to do. And the other part of that is FEMA. We need to make sure that we stay moving ahead, marching. We've been told that the City of West Sacramento is doing a very, very good job, and so FEMA has really sort of, I can say left us alone, but at least looking the other ways in, in some instances compared to other jurisdictions. And so this is very important that we have, we line up all our ducks. We, we, we get everything, and, and I certainly appreciate work that you guys have done. Phil's done, you've done, and, and all the staff, because this is so important for the City of West Sacramento. Thank you.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Paul, this agreement with Del Rio Advisors, you know, I understand we're getting it set up in case we need to go forward with independent bond issuance. Is there any initial cost to do this? And then the second question is, you know, if we decide we, we want to go ahead with our independent, or need to, what's, what's, how long does that timeframe do from when we give these guys the go to we're able to issue?
Well, the, the engagement letter with Del Rio Advisors does not have a cost upfront. Only if there is an actual bond issuance would there then be compensation, so they get, we call it a contingent contract. And the idea is that we would be able to issue bonds, let's say, from, from the direction to do so from, from this Board. It would take approximately three months.
Okay.
One, one of the advantages we have is that we, we have all the bond documents already, you know, from past issues, and you're basically duplicating those. And so the, the critical path item is usually something we call the official statement, which is updating information about the nature of the West Africa assessment, you know, property values that support that assessment, and things like that, and so we can move fairly quickly.
If I remember, we did issue in 2015, and we, we redid some older bonds, but there was a, a group that were too young to do. If this, if we in 2017 go forward, would they be eligible for, to be redone, or do you know, offhand?
Well, that, that's a good question. Typically, there's a 10-year call provision that, that prevents us from moving forward. In the case of what we did last year, there was an, there was an early call allowance. So I would have to look at the 2011 bond issue. We'd have to look at that. It's, there's a potential certainly to, to do a refunding of old debt anytime we're doing new debt, and we, we will look at that and, and be able to get back to you on it.
Okay. It may make the idea of us going independently more, you know, more realistic if, if need be so. Anyhow, it's just something to look at, at that time.
I can tell you, every time we do one of those refundings, we say it's going to be the last one, but for some reason, municipal interest rates keep going down, and we're getting incredible savings from the recent refundings we've done.
Okay. And then I'd just like to make a, a few more comments and kind of work off what Bill said. I'm, I'm in agreement with him, and very thankful for, you know, what, what you folks, the city, and our staff have done to be able to put together this, this, you know, funding package at, at this time, and, and it was great to see that. I, last night, I took the opportunity to go forward to City Council and, and thank them and, and the city staff for going ahead and transferring the $4.5 million to us, and we're obviously going to accept it and, and move forward. And the mayor made a few comments afterwards and basically talked about, you know, And the mayor made a few comments afterwards and basically talked about, you know, having the flexibility to be able to, on the fly, be able to move monies around, and I agree with really everything he said. But in specific, that's really the Measure V money that we, you know, when it was first approved by the voters, and there was an advisory that the money would be shared, and so we were able to do that. The whole funding of our local flood program, though, is the three pieces that, you know, everyone brings up, and that's the assessment, it's the in-loof fee, and then it's also the Measure V. And the in-loof fee, I kind of look a little differently in that, you know, it's the, it's this, it was written up as the city, the ordinance receives those monies, and they're the custodian of those monies. But we, I was trying to have, you know, make it aware last night that we need to make sure that those funds are made available for flood projects when needed. And I would hope as we go forward, and it said in the staff report, that those monies are there for future needs if necessary. But we've, you know, we've discussed this issue back and forth the last several months, and the city staff has agreed that they would keep us informed of what could possibly be available in the future, and I think we need to continue to do that, so that if that money's available, it's there. So, that's it.
Everything you said is factual, and I agree with it. I agree with Bill also on it. This, we're talking about short-term loan, three-year, as a short-term loan deal. That's what we assigned or agreed to, like, two months ago, short-term loans?
That's correct. It's very short-term borrowing.
Okay. So how do we handle this? Do we approve this as a package? Because there's three items where we're accepting the money, we're directing, that we go with the agreement with Del Rio Advisors, and then we also direct staff to go bring in the final details of this line of credit? If that's the case, I would, I would make a motion recommending those three items.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Appreciate the money. West AFCA project updates.
Morning, President Denton, members of the board. Just wanted to go through and highlight some of the items that's contained in the progress report this month. On the Southport project, we are very close to putting that project out for bid. We're finalizing the, or staff is reviewing the final 100% plans and specifications. That review will be complete end of this week, early next. At that point, the bid package will be finalized, and we plan to put the project out for bid end of next week or first of the following, so either end of April, beginning of May. Following the bid, we anticipate bringing a contract back for consideration for the board. May not make it at the June meeting, so we'll either bring it back at a special meeting end of June or beginning of July, or at the July meeting for consideration of a contract for construction of the levy components of the project. From permitting, the 408 package has been back at headquarters for their review and approval as far, as well as the review and issuance of the record decision on the final EIS. Just learned a couple days ago that that review is now complete. Office of Council completed their review. The minimal comments are expected to trickle down to district for response, and then that package will be closed out, and we expect headquarters to issue their permission to the district to issue the letter of permission for the 408 in early May. So that's, that's good news. Real estate in support of the project, so one of the big things is this real estate plan we've been talking about for some time. Staff has been working very closely with and very diligently to get that plan reviewed and approved by DWR Real Estate. We had submitted, based on a meeting with DWR, we had submitted a, resubmitted the plan for their review. We received a couple minor changes that they've requested, and that is being incorporated now with our resubmital. Later this week, early next, we will request from DWR that they approve the plan as submitted. So we're all keeping our fingers crossed that happens. Once that plan is approved, we'll be able to submit our real estate packages to the state for review and approval, which then would start the reimbursement of the state share of those expenditures. And as Mark had pointed out earlier during the financial update, there's a tremendous amount of capital being expended now on real estate, and until, it's a lot of cost for us to carry. So it's real important for us to get those packages to and through DWR so we can get that cash flowing back from the state. On Village Parkway improvements, if you haven't been out in the field to take a look at the progress, we, this week, started the paving from Gregory all the way up to Lake Washington. I think by the end of today, we will have completed, if not all, of the second, first two lifts of asphalt for the entire project reach, or it'll be very close to. Expecting rain tomorrow, so they'll suspend asphalt work until early next week, and they'll complete, complete the third and final lift from Gregory all up to Lake Washington. And then we're scheduled, I think it's on the 25th and 26th, that may bump a couple of days, but to do, then switch over to paving of the access roads that provide access to the property owners. So that should all be wrapped up next week. Following that is the signing and striping, and then we'll be moving to project closeout. So that project's moving ahead, ahead of schedule, and we anticipate the work being completed. Borrowing any unforeseen circumstances or any inclement weather, hopefully it'll be completed in June, a little bit ahead of schedule. General evaluation report. As Mr. Kristoff pointed out, we have a chief's report that is, if not on the chief's desk for execution, it is down the hall, making its way to the chief's desk for execution. During our trip to cap to cap, I guess that was two weeks ago, we had several meetings with key staff and congressional leaders who are working on the Word of Bill. They're very aware of our project, both the House side and the Senate side. They're tracking things and working directly with Core Headquarters to receive that chief's report, so it can be included in both the House and Senate versions of the Word of Bill. We are, we are very close, and we have both ASA's office, as well as Senator Boxer's staff, Congressman Garamendi's staff, Congresswoman Matt Sui's staff, all tracking things and keeping us posted, as well as our federal lobbyists, too. So as we know more, we'll keep you posted, but we're real close. We're expecting that end of this month for that chief's report to be executed. Then the last thing that I wanted to discuss or bring to the board's attention is the update to the problem identification report and alternatives analysis. We expect the final problem identification report, final draft, to be completed end of this month. The final draft of the alternatives analysis report will probably follow two to three weeks behind that. Team is working diligently to get those, those pieces completed, as well as completing the overall program cost and schedule based on those alternatives. So we plan to bring an item to the board next month to present the findings and the results of those analyses and give you an update of where we stand. The last time this was performed was back in 2007, 2008, and in the intervening time, of course, we had this study done by the Core as part of the general evaluation report. So this will kind of button all of that up, and it will include some of the new urban levy design criteria that also came into play in that intervening time. So it'll be a good summary of where we were and where we are now, and what we have left to do. That concludes my updates. Be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
If there being nothing further, we'll adjourn the meeting.
We got one informational.
Oh, one informational item, all right.
Just to add on to Greg's comments about the cap to cap trip, I did attend again, along with Greg, this year on the flood protection team, and I got to say, it was a very productive, you know, and hopefully will be a successful trip here in the next week or so. But it wasn't just being there and, you know, promoting our GRR and the Word of Bill. This flood protection team is a pretty sophisticated team. One of our leaders is in the audience here today, Eric Nagy, and along with Chris Elliott. It's a very experienced, well-seasoned team, and it's not just discussing, you know, our projects and whatnot, it's getting into a lot of the nuances of flood protection and relationships with the different federal agencies, you know, in particular the Core, but also FEMA and even EPA, when you get into some of the, you know, Clean Water Act stuff. So we had a very varied group of meetings, a meeting with all, you know, not just congressmen, but other agencies. One in particular meeting we had was with CEQ, Council of Environmental Quality, within the White House, and it was very interesting when we went in there and started our presentation that they were aware of West Sacramento, they were aware of all of our issues, you know, the 408, getting the 408 permits and all the things, and flood plain management, and all the stuff we're doing here every day. They were, you know, they understood them, our arguments made sense to them, and, you know, I think we made, made progress there, and, you know, I think it's something we need to continue to do. So, thank you, Eric. Thanks, Greg.
Nothing further, we'll adjourn.